Cue. Okay, I'll call the meeting to order at the clock. Let's start with the flag salute.
But congratulations to the flag, United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, equal, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right, may we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Director Sessonia.
Here.
Director Cross.
Here.
Director Hubbard.
Present.
Vice President Forkroy.
Here.
President Womack.
Present. Then do I announce this, or? We have closed session items, conference with real property negotiator, and we'll be adjourning to closed session.
You need to take public comment real quick.
Okay, do we have anyone online?
We do not.
Okay, let's open it up for public comment.
There is none online.
All right, and now we will adjourn. All right, I will. Reconvene no open session? I don't believe we have any.
We do not have anything to report out of closed session.
Okay. That's a report. Do we have any public safety reports?
I did receive an email, or email from the sheriff department. He apologized he wasn't going to be able to make it tonight, and said he would be happy to give his email out for anybody who had questions.
Okay, is that, we don't have fire or CHP either?
Not online at the moment, no.
Oh, all right, moving right along. General action items. Cabrillo Stormwater Basin update.
Well, boy, jump right into it here. Let me find my place. Great, this is a, really just an update on where we're at with the process from our Cabrillo Stormwater Basin, you know, disaster from January 2023. Director Forkroy had been asking about, you know, kind of a summary of costs and what we can anticipate into the future. So this is my best effort on trying to gather up all that information into a concise report for us to discuss tonight. Just a little bit of background. Like I said, this is associated with the January 2023 Cabrillo Stormwater Basin failure of the northeast corner of the basin wall. Repairs on that area that failed began immediately after the disaster on January 10th. And the temporary repairs were completed in, at the very end of April 2023. Those repairs included rebuilding the portion of the basin wall that failed, then relining the entire north wall of the basin with 60 mil polyethylene liner. The actual failure area was probably between 200, 250 feet, and the whole basin wall is about 600 feet, to give you some perspective.
I would, I would just add real quick to that, that those repairs, right, those are temp, those were, those are temporary repairs, so, because we're going to be talking, he's going to be talking about in a second, about more work there, and it's because what was installed was to get it back functioning as soon as possible.
Correct. Right. So those were considered temporary repairs, and we'll get into that a little bit of the distinction when we start talking about the FEMA process. And the, and this kind of talks to that, the district's consulting geotechnical and civil engineers recommended that the permanent repairs should include the construction of that 600-foot slurry wall along the entire north side of the basin to prevent further, any further underseepage. Now, slurry wall is basically a structure, typically concrete, that is dug or entrenched into the area. I don't know how many feet it goes down, I don't remember offhand, but then it's adding that strength to that wall, so we don't have any future issues like that. And you could probably explain it better than me, Matthew, but basically, it's a concrete structure that'll go 600 feet down that north side. As part of the process of applying for grant money, we did have our civil engineers develop 60% design documents. So we do have a start on the design of that project, and those will be used for any future work. Next, I wanted to talk about the processes. There are two. The first one we'll get into is FEMA 406 Hazard Mitigation Grant. These are for facilities that have been damaged in a federally declared disaster, like the one we had in January 2023. In the district's case, only the portion of the basin wall that was damaged is eligible for reimbursement under this program. So if you remember, our engineers have said, we need to do the entire, that's why FEMA will only cover that portion that was actually damaged during the, that declared disaster. Now, the application process is complicated, and the applicant, like our district, must file for financial assistance based on the timing of the disaster and the type of facility that was damaged. And to kind of better define that, there's two, there are two FEMA categories that the district qualified for. The first one was category B, for, and that's for emergency protective measures to prevent further damage. Unfortunately, under this category, the eligible expenditures were only for the period between January 9th to February 28th. And I'll show you some of the numbers there in just a moment. And like I said, the actual temporary repairs were completed at the end of April. But those expenses between January and the end of February are 100% reimbursable. The second was considered a category D project, which is for water control facilities like our stormwater basin. And reimbursement is, for this category, is 75% of the eligible cost. Ineligible costs for the district included the neighborhood assistance that we provided up there. If you recall, we had roll-offs. We actually had a construction company with bulldozers out there scooping dirt that was shelved out by the volunteers and hauling away of that dirt. Porta potties don't, aren't reimbursable, some of our administrative costs and some of our consultant fees as well. So to date, including both ineligible and eligible costs, we've spent $848,507.99. And again, that's for everything we've paid out to date. Now, to get down to kind of the FEMA summary, the category B project, we were able to submit cost verification for $62,636, and that's 100% reimbursable. The good news is, at the end of last week, that part of our project has been obligated, which means we should get reimbursed. I don't know when, it's still federal money when that would cut, but that has been approved. Now, the estimate for the category D project was $586,892, and 75% of that would be the $441,69. So the total reimbursement from FEMA would be $502,805. I did want to say, I already talked about the first bullet, that the category B project was based on $2023 and the best information at that time. We had part of our second part, which I'm going to talk about here in a moment, had the engineer reevaluate the cost estimate, and he, they upgraded it to $856,130. So it's about, I think it's a $270,000 difference. But because we're locked in, we'll never see any reimbursement for that extra, extra money spent, or needing to be spent, I should say.
Can, can that, can we, can I ask a question? But back on dollars spent to date and potential FEMA reimbursement? So we've spent, because these numbers are really close, 848,579 is what we, the district has spent to date. The 856,130 is the remaining, like, cost that, to complete the project.
Correct.
And if everything goes good, at some point, we'll get $502,805 back from FEMA.
Correct.
Got it.
Yeah. That's an important number as we kind of move through these tables, so I'm glad you asked for clarification there. So, if we have the project cost of $856,000, and if we apply that $502,805 to the, that one part of the basin project, the difference would be out of pocket that the district would have to pay for is that $350,325. And what's very interesting, and we'll get into this next section, but keep that number in mind. So anyway, that's, and these, these projects, and I'll talk about this a little bit later, they'll have to be done in two phases because they're technically two different funding sources. So if we can get FEMA to commit, we get that $502,000, and then we'll need to figure out how to, to pay the $353,000. And there's ways we can do that with interfund loans or different things. And right now, I'll get to the financial part of it at the very end, because actually, Fund 800 does have money. So we'll talk about that in a minute. Okay, now, the second process is administered by the California Office of Emergency Services, CAL OES, and it's called 404 mitigation fund. And this is separate funding mechanism available to fund, it is through the federal government, but administered by CAL OES. And the purpose of this funding is for projects to reduce or prevent loss from future disasters. So now that we have a geotechnical and civil firm saying we need to do this extra project, or permanent repair project, it qualifies under this 404 mitigation fund. And this has been quite a long process. I started working on it in June of 2023 and really didn't get an accepted application until February 2025. It was quite a bit. It'll reimburse 75% of the project's estimated cost, and this is what we, we estimated the, the other portion, the non-FEMA portion, to be 1.4 million, federal cost share would be a little bit over a million. And so the district's liability for this one is $352,643, very close to the other one. So what does that mean in total? So putting the cost estimates together, they are about 2.2, 2.3 million total. And then the combined out-of-pocket cost to the district would be the 705, almost $706,000. But because they're going to be done in, in two phases more than likely, that'll maybe help our cash flow. As we've seen with capital projects, there may be a way for us to figure out funding for that from within the district. But that said, we can look at the financial impact a little bit here. We have to remember that Fund 800 is still paying off that $300,000 loan. And that's, will be paid off March 1st, 2028, and it still has about $159,700 left on it. In reserves, we have $65,000 unassigned cash, that 425,345, for a total of $490,345. So there is money sitting in Fund 800. And we probably still have a couple of years before these projects will be able to start moving forward, hopefully sooner, especially for the FEMA one. But, but, you know, the uncertainty right now of federal money, it's hard to predict.
So who is paying? How do we make sure it's, like, I would assume it's community-wide, right? Like, it's not going to come from Water Fund?
No, we have a drainage, the drainage fund is community-wide. We have a drainage tax. But we've also been moving money over from Zone A. So it is community-wide, even though it is very specific to one area of the community.
Um, but Zone A isn't enough to do 700 grand. I mean, the way we have portioned it now.
No, the, you know, the options would be interfund loan, like we've done.
Then it pays off from the drainage tax?
Right. And that's, you know, that's where this money is basically coming from. The, the money that Zone A has paid in, the drainage tax, and then we've, there, I think it's Zone J. It's not very much money, but it was one that was kind of lingering out there, being used up in Bay Ridge at one point, but now that's been moved over for a community-wise, wide use.
So what's the drainage tax pulling in every year?
Under $100,000. It, it's been flat since it was adopted. It's one of those that has never increased.
I'm just thinking, I mean, I guess we're not starting for a couple of years, but so seven years to pay for that.
Can you, can you back up a little bit? I like how you've broken out all these buckets of money, and, and I see how you have them combined. I guess what I don't, what's not clear to me, so category B project is what was eligible, right?
Correct.
What we've already done.
And it was part of, of what we had done, plus the cut, projected cost of the permanent repair.
So what's category D then?
That's D, I'm sorry. B was just for a short period of time in our emergency response period.
Right. So that doesn't, that, that's all reimbursement dollars?
Right.
But category D includes some reimbursement?
Yes.
And some?
Some of the
Permanent fix.
Or some of the temporary fix.
So it's all reimbursement money also?
Yes.
So that, that's not? Okay, so all of the FEMA money would be reimbursing us for what we've already paid?
Plus what we anticipated as, as of the cost for the permanent repair.
Okay. So one of those categories includes some money from the response, the temporary fix, and the eligible part of the hole?
Right.
Just the hole?
Right.
And then the CAL OES money is for basically that big wall?
For the other, probably about two-thirds.
Got it.
Because it's about two-thirds is, it was undamaged, about a third was damaged.
Yeah. So I guess, yeah, we got to talk about how we're going to parse these all out. But I definitely, this is, there's a couple of key things that I think that we should, we should talk about, especially because there's a couple of board members that weren't here. So what we're talking about is the Cabrillo basin, so Cabrillo Estates, all of the roads drain into that basin. And then it should infiltrate into the ground and disappear. And if it fills up, it's supposed to overflow onto Pedro Road. So in general, the district has a few of these drainage things where we don't control what comes in. We don't really control what goes out. We just have this thing, this big structure in the middle. That gets, I don't want to get diverted, but, but we did send a letter to County Public Works asking to resolve some of these issues and potentially try to give the basin back to them. That hasn't gone anywhere, but I think in general, that's something that this district should be very eager to pursue. The other thing that I think is important is when we did these repairs, we lowered the emergency overflow. So the height of that is lower than it was previously. And that was to ensure that the basin didn't have, couldn't fill up quite as much as it used to. And we did, we hired MNS, I believe, to do a hydrological study to, to look at a design storm and how much it rains, and how quickly that rain collects and concentrates and fills up the basin at different, we looked at different intervals to look at how often water would be expected to be put, because it just gushes out onto Pedro Road, which we found out in the middle of this thing was a huge problem.
Right, substantial, yeah.
There's no curb on the other side of Pedro Road. There's the S&amp;T Mutual Water Company tanks on the other side of the road. That water tries to go down people's backyards, creates a huge traffic hazard, because there's a river flowing down Pedro Road, basically. So those are some, some other unresolved issues. These buckets of money, though, you know, I guess, is there? Because we're asking everybody in the community, basically, to fix this. And is, is that, is that the only possible way forward, or is there ways to, to look at, like, because, I mean, that basin was part of essentially that subdivision, right? So I guess I'm, I'm wondering if there's a conversation to be had about how we're paying for this in general, like the methodology.
Well, it's a tough one, and I, I agree with everything you said and the kind of the background information. Thanks for providing that, too. You know, we could try to form an assessment district up there for drainage, but that has to be the vote of the property owners. You know, we have Bay Ridge, the Cabrillo Basin's problematic because of where it is and how it was built.
Yes.
You know, the Bay Ridge Drainage Basin, Vista de Oro, they're in-ground, so to speak. They don't have like a basin wall or a berm or a levee. So when they fill up, they overflow, but they just flow out of the street. It's not like
Right.
they would overtop and, you know, do basically what happened in January 2023.
Yeah, I mean, we basically have a, what is a pond on the side of a hill above a neighborhood, is what.
Like a big lake.
Yeah. And, and, you know, we looked at the original, you know, we, we had nothing to do with the design to build the permitting of that basin. And
Well, I agree, you know, we, we tried to initiate that conversation and with, with really no response. But I, I, it's been on the back of my mind, we would get there, I was hoping that we would have these projects initiated, and then we could go, okay, the CSD, the district has done more than enough. This needs to go back to you, just as you were saying. The water comes in from their facilities, roads. It exits onto their facility road if it overflows. The basin's just this intermediary collection point. And why we're maintaining it, it's a mystery. There is some interesting special district regulations that I think it was associated with when the wastewater project came over or started, that the district had that wastewater authority. I'm looking into it a little bit more. It came to my attention when I was looking at the LAFCO municipal review of our services. It was MSR, Municipal Services Review, and they had a statement in there about that we have limited drainage authority based on our, our standing as a special district and not having a wastewater utility. So there may be an opening there for that conversation, along with the other issues for land use, roads, everything else we've been complaining about. And it needs to be addressed. The timing just hasn't been there yet. It's not getting better, though. Counties budgets and the way they're trying to contract rather than expand and provide more service.
Well, ultimately, I mean, that, that could be something where LAFCO is the intermediary, right, about that?
Yeah, you know, I've talked to LAFCO about it back when we first started this, and they said, you, you can start the process, but you have to have a willing recipient. Because in their MSR review, it says, yeah, we have these facilities, but that's really about all we should have.
Okay, well, yeah, I, it's something that I, I think that, that I, I get that we have to wait for the right time. I get that it's, it's a slow process because of these funding sources. But it's something that I would want, like, our, our council to engage in, in a really meaningful way, you know, when the time is right.
Right. I, I think we'll check off a few boxes here soon, hopefully Fire and some others, and we can
Yeah.
then have that focus.
Yeah, and I, I still think it's, it's a little scary to have, have that out on Pedro Road and yeah, that, I mean, that by itself, to me, is a huge, 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 huge issue. So yeah, the sooner I think we can get, get towards at least dialoguing with the county would be good.
Right. So, you know, the, the scary part for us, or the difficult part be, would be if these outside funding programs don't come through, and we're stuck with a two-plus-million-dollar project. I've definitely been keeping my eye out for grants, but this may be a situation where we might have to do some sort of a loan as well, if it goes to that, that degree. I think if we were on the hook for the 700, I think we can pull that one off. And then this is all definitely subject to inflation, too. You know, the longer we wait, the more stale these numbers become.
There's no way to increase our volume for drainage?
Proport to 18, yeah. That's all I have.
Any further questions or comments from the board before I open it up for public comment? Okay, I'm going to open this up for public comment.
If you're online, please raise your hand, and in the boardroom, come to the podium.
Richard Margerson. Should have been at Finance on Monday, Matthew. The county was talked about. Their responsibility. If it, if these numbers hold for the year-end in drainage, we're going to have about 120,000 surplus, which helps. Couple, three years, the repayment to the I, or to the interfund loan will be completed. The fund probably has enough revenue for, when I talked about a loan. Is the I-bank doing anything anymore? Okay, because that's the, the I-bank loan is the one for all the water projects. Yeah, just some things to think about, but I agree with Matthew. As time goes on, costs are going to go up, and it's only going to get more expensive.
There is no, I'm sorry, there's no public comment online.
Thank you, Lauren.
Yeah, I-bank would be a potential spot, USDA maybe. So there are, there, there would be opportunities out there to borrow money, especially for a project like this.
All right. Thank you for that presentation. All right, do we have any public comments for items not on the agenda?
If you're online, please raise your hand, and in the boardroom, come to the podium. There is no public comment online.
All right, thank you. Administrative and committee reports? You have a general manager report?
Uh, thank you. I was going to step back just for a minute and do some of the utility department updates, just because there's some, some big ones on here that we've been doing. One, the Los Angeles Middle School Recycled Water Connection is complete. Project's been in the works for years and years and years, so it's actually active and going, so that's a big step for the community, and then we'll save between 20 and 25 acre feet. Just a bit of an update on the Program Seawell project. We were in a predicament of maybe losing $150,000 of our DWR loan because of our deadline of end of September 2025. And as I've reported, we've had some delays. Margaret reached out, and they did extend our deadline to February 2026. We're anticipating being done in October of this year, so that's good news. The SCADA system, Supervisory Control and Data Acquisition System, 100% design work is complete. We're receiving submittals to approve acquiring all the components. And we should have that up in, or starting installation this month with timeframe of late November being complete. And I did want to report out, you know, we did approve the release of the RFP for the Water Resiliency Intertine Pipeline Project. We had a non-mandatory pre-proposal meeting on January, or July 23rd, and three local design firms did attend, so there, you know, some local interest in that. Proposals are due August 21st, so I'll be able to report out next month on the results of that, hopefully. As far as my GM report, I wanted to provide the, the public a little bit of an update on the Sunnyside School Acquisition Project. Our project team is still working on the ballot initiative language and have engaged a local attorney to assist on, with that effort. The timing of the election will be, be determined by our outreach or progress on completing all those. It looks like it's going to be June. It looks like it's going to be June, uh, election twenty twenty six. And we, that group is working on a public outreach strategy and messaging. Um, we do have a survey that will be hitting the streets. Uh, we hired a professional public opinion research firm, FM three. Um, they will be starting, uh, um, tentatively starting that survey on August eighteenth, and that will take a couple of weeks to get that finished and the results in. And we are working on a second town hall meeting. A tentative date is not September fourteenth anymore, since this was published. Uh, we're looking, I think it was September twenty first, uh, and that's still tentative because we have to secure a location and we have to, um, make sure we have, uh, materials for the public to, uh, hear and see. So, and we are making adjustments in our, our, our process to hopefully, uh, frame a project and, and a cost that the, we feel the community will, will, um, be able to afford. So, uh, look forward to having that go out, and if you are contacted for a survey, please, um, participate, whether you're for or against ac- acquiring Sunnyside School. And with that, I can answer any questions.
Any questions? All right, shall I open that, or are we going to a manager's report or?
So that's my general managers. So we have Chamber or?
Oh.
That's written.
Lopec, was it Chuck?
Yeah, Chuck didn't.
He provided a written report. It should be in the packet.
Yeah, it's in the packet.
Okay, then we'll move on. Do we have a Parkinson rec?
We did have a meeting. We did have a meeting, um. There, we basically just went over, um, what Ron just talked about for Sunnyside School. Um, providing the committee an update and, um, talking about getting ready for this poll.
Okay, thank you. Let's see, utilities advisory?
Um, I can report out on that. The main, and, and this was also for the Basin Management Committee. We talked about the, the Basin Management Committee report that was given, um, that is looking at, at the recycled facilities planning grant that, uh, helped fund the transient model. The second part of that study is looking at water supply alternatives, both with recycled water and a, a couple of other ones, one being our Intertight Project to state water and the other one being, um, more upper offer nitrate treatment. So, uh, the consultant for, um, the, uh, Basin Management Committee provided a very thorough report. Didn't have the numbers complete, that's, the, um, the supply options. Uh, I think they'll have that for this upcoming meeting in August. But it was a very robust conversation on, on the different alternatives, and none of them are inexpensive. So, uh, more on that probably after this month's, uh, BMC meeting.
Okay, all right, thank you. Uh, Finance, um, committee, they recommended approving the warrant register, receiving and filing the financial reports. And we had our quarterly investment report. And I think we're earning, was it four point four percent or four point two percent?
Right in there, yeah.
Something around there and, um, yeah, I think that's the main highlights.
We talked about the Cabrillo Basin as well.
Right, that you already went over earlier.
Yes.
So that's, that was finance. Let's see, no ESAC, basin management?
Basically was just what I reported out for, uh, utility advisory. Uh, it was really recapping for, uh, UAC or the, the, UAC heard a recap of the Basin Management Committee. That was the main topic on that one.
Okay. Any directors announcements, uh, district, of district and community interests or, uh, reports on attendance at public meetings?
I have one.
All right.
Um, I attended yesterday evening, the, uh, National Night Out at, uh, City of Morro Bay had it at Cloisters Park. It was, uh, presented by the Fire and Police Departments jointly. Uh, very, very well attended, saw people from Los Osos there, people obviously from Morro Bay. Uh, very kid friendly, a lot of kids there, you know, this is a, a very young area now, it seems. But, uh, they, you know, had, uh, free food and, uh, you know, uh, the olive, all the little things that, uh, that the fire people do, like they had the, uh, the simulation truck there with the simulated fires and earthquakes and all that. And they also showed, uh, how they break a car into pieces when they have to get somebody out of a car. It was a very, very interesting and, and well-attended event.
All right.
Yeah.
Jaws of Life?
Uh, no, no, I see. I don't know if they broke those out or not. Uh, they, they had everything else. I mean, they, they basically took a car and broke it in half. Say for, you know, for people that have an accident and can't get out of the car. It was, uh, you know, again, pretty interesting.
Thanks for your report. Any others? Okay, moving along. I don't think, I don't believe we had any previous asked questions. Let's see. Do I ask if anyone wants to pull anything from the consent, consent agenda? And, uh, let's open this up for public comment for items on the administrative and community committee reports and the consent agenda.
If you're online, please raise your hand and in the boardroom, come to the podium. There is no public comment online.
And none in the boardroom. All right. We don't have to vote on anything in the consent agenda, correct?
We make a motion to receive and file the administrative committee reports and to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second that.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hey, moving along. Future agenda items? And, uh, closing board comments?
I, I had one, I'm sorry, uh, on the future agenda items. And this goes back to my, uh, attendance at the, uh, the National Light Night Out. I, I don't know if it'd be beneficial or not, but it'd be nice to be able to identify yourself as a member of the CSD, like a, a, you know, just a simple pinned information card or whatever, saying, you know, I'm Rich Hubbard and I'm District Five Director and, uh, so people know that, you know, there's people out there, uh, us, we're just not sitting here every, you know, once a month just talking about stuff and then forgetting about the whole thing. They, you know, they, they could see that we're actually out there. And I, I, I think it'd be valuable to be able to, uh, to do that.
Yeah, I like, I like putting that on the agenda. It reminds me at the Cabrillo Basin, when that all was going on, that was a big issue too, is just identifying who you are. The sheriff's had the roads closed and couldn't even get where you needed to go. So I'm all in favor of some sort of identifications.
We will definitely look into that. That would be, I think, a pretty easy fix.
Okay, true, good idea. Um, all right, any closing board comments? All right, here's where I feel like I should have one, but can't think of anything. Um, all right, I'm gonna adjourn our meeting. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you, everyone.
Their participation.